Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the Central Jury Room at 1200 West Pearl Street. Would you all please stand for the invocation and the pledges?
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that we have the privilege of living in a country where we elect citizens to help guide and rule and see that we're going in the right direction. We thank you for the many, many blessings that you give us each and every day. We ask that you be with this court today. Give them the wisdom and the guidance and the wisdom to make the decisions that are good for Hood County. We ask you to be with our military throughout the world. Watch over them as they protect us and give us the right to meet such as we are today. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I'll draw me the pledge of this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge of Texas?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. Any special presentations this morning, Richard?
Yes, sir. Five. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Have a tenure at the Sheriff's Department.
Toby came to us from Corpus Christi, so congratulations, ten years.
Ten years.
Right?
Ten years, yep.
In a twenty year at road operations.
Yeah, this is Todd's twentieth year with Hood County.
They don't recognize him without a hat on.
Your left hand. Thanks, Todd.
Todd, you didn't say Jeff photobombing you, did you? All right, very good. Thank you all for your service. We really appreciate it. Next, does any citizen wish to comment on any agenda item? If they do, would you please raise your hand? Sheriff has forms. C and nine, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion moved to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. You know, just as a point of interest, there was item E, it seems to be missing from the, and I don't know where it went, so just look on your agenda. Is there an E on y'all's?
Mm-hmm.
There's not one on mine. I don't know what happened to mine. But the next item of business is item number eight, business to discuss and consider for approval subdivision roads and plats, road operations. Discuss and consider, take appropriate action concerning the request to place base material and a C two CPS on a section of Skyline Drive in Rock Harbor subdivision.
Judge, Commissioner Dever had asked to put this on the agenda. It's a platted roadway, what they call a paper road. It's never built by the developer. It's approximately 135 foot in length.
Is this a gravel road or something?
Back in 2011, this gentleman and our roadway were getting flooded, and we come and did some ditch work. And actually, I went through Kelton Connor, whether we could get on this platted section. And he said we could. We had to berm it up, but then they use it as access, so we had to berm it in such a way that they could still drive over it. But this was to keep it from going on this person's property and flooding his OSSF and in turn keep it from going across our roadway.
So is this will help the county?
We've already done, back in 2011, we did the drainage on it, is what we did.
The guy approached me back when I first got in office and wanted us to fix it, and I told him, "I'm not going to have a bunch of county equipment out there to do this one road since the road in Rock Harbor Court washed out and they did work in there." I told the gentleman I would present this for the court so it wouldn't just make one trip down there to do this road, so we're going to have equipment to pave the spot that washed out at Rock Harbor Court. So I'd like for the court to approve this since we're going to have the equipment and everything down there already.
Is it a public road?
It's a paper road. It still belongs to the developer.
It's a what road?
A paper road. It's been platted, but never was constructed by the developer. And when the county come in and accepted maintenance, that wasn't one of them because it wasn't built. So in the eyes of the law, it still belongs to the developer at this moment.
Well, to answer Jeff's question, is it just for one person or is there a hundred people down there?
Two people that live on it.
Two people. That was your question, right?
Since 2010, we've never heard from the gentleman across the way. It's always been this gentleman on the corner.
So I guess my confusion here is if it belongs to the developer, then do we not have a petition on it like we do on other roads we do here?
I don't have, no, sir, I don't have one on this one.
Should we have?
To follow our policy. We don't have a policy on paper roads, but to follow our policy on any other road, yeah.
Well, I don't mind doing it, but I don't, you know, I want to follow what the law says.
There's one other situation with this particular roadway is that the gentleman has got his chain link fence out in this right away and his driveway. I don't know, we won't be able to get a 22, we won't be able to get a road standard 22 foot paved without messing with one of the two items, private property.
Are they willing to move the fence?
I haven't spoken to him.
Okay. You know anything about that, James? Well, what do you think about that? I mean, is that a killer deal or what?
It could be.
You want a table list so we can get all that worked out?
Sure.
Will you make that motion?
I'll make a motion, table list, further discussion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout, motion made by Commissioner Dever to table this till we can get some of this other information. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you. Discuss and consider approval of the final plat for lots one and two, block one, Kyle Taylor addition, take appropriate action.
Judge, this is approximately 11 acre track that's being subdivided equally into two lots, and both those lots being approximately five and a half acres in size. The property is located within the rural district of Precinct One, and the plat does meet the planning requirements of Hood County. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of lots one and two, block one, Kyle Taylor addition as presented.
This is one on Billings Road, right?
Yeah, they get access off 377. Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever, secured by Commissioner Barton. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Discuss and consider approval of the final plat for lots one and two, block one, Kyle Taylor addition, take appropriate action.
Judge, this is approximately 11 acre track that's being subdivided equally into two lots, and both those lots being approximately five and a half acres in size. The property is located within the rural district of Precinct One, and the plat does meet the planning requirements of Hood County. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of lots one and two, block one, Kyle Taylor addition as presented.
This is one on Billings Road, right?
Yeah, they get access off 377. Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever, secured by Commissioner Barton. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Discuss and consider approval of the final plat for lots one and two, block one, Williams addition as presented.
This is one on Billings Road, right?
Yeah, they get access off 377. Yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever, secured by Commissioner Berry. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Discuss and consider approval of the final plat for lots one and two, block one, Williams addition, take appropriate action.
Judge, this plat proposes subdividing a two acre lot, having an approximate nine acre track within the rural district of Precinct One. Lot one being the remaining seven and 114 thousandths of an acre, and lot two being the two acre lot. This plat also meets the requirements of Hood County. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of lots one and two, block one, Williams addition as presented.
Question. Sewer and septic, because we've lowered our standards from three to two, but the sewer and the, are the actual onsite septic and the water well are within state regulations?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plats for lots one and two, block one, Williams addition.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. Budget and finance. Consider budget line item amendments for the period of July 7th, 2015 through July the 20th, 2015.
Judge and Commissioners, before I get into that, the purchasing agent has an advance requisition question for the court regarding supplies.
Good morning. I have a request from the fire marshal to take out of his supply line to purchase a new fire pager for Mike Stafford. Apparently, his pager is being held together with tape and is not very usable. This is a cost of $512 that they want to come out of their supply line, so I need your approval.
Okay. All right, let's, we'll do them all at one time. Stan, you want to go?
Judge and Commissioners, I have a lengthy list of budget amendments. I'll try to be brief on each one. I provided these to the court. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to stop at any time and address them. In August of 2013, the court obligated money out of our capital equipment fund, 55, for the construction of animal control facility. I believe all of those construction activities are completed, and there's an amount of $114,250 that I would request the court to de-obligate from that project so we could appropriate that for another purpose. Constable Thrasher wants to move $600 into a repair item for tires for his vehicle. Constable Jordan requests to move $900 from various of his lines into copier lease to cover the rest of this year for the copier lease in his office. The sheriff asks to move $2,200 from two other lines in animal control into animal control supplies to cover their supplies expectation for the rest of the year. The district attorney asks to move $2,266.72 into his investigations budget from another line item to cover his investigations cost. And in Fund 54, which is the sheriff's DARE program, they have collected substantially more revenues than were anticipated, so I'd like to declare to the court $1,000 of additional revenues. This is needed in the DARE training budget, so it would be clothing collections revenue declared as new revenues for the purpose of officer training and the DARE program. We would request the court's approval for these budget line amendments.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve these budget line items along with the one that the purchasing department recommends.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Consider payment bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of these bills are $1,049,967.57. The largest single item is to W.B. Kibler for YMCA construction progress, $503,219.75. The other large item represent payments of debt service interest on bonded debt of the county to our various lenders. That's in the amount of $319,746.26. To give you some idea on the interest on long-term debt, the annual cost for this year is about $615,000, and that represents an average interest rate of about 2.75% on the county's debt of just about $22.6 million. The two largest debt issues have to do with this building, the Justice Center. I'll have more to tell you about that on Friday during the budget hearing, but those are at an interest rate of just over 4%. We're not able to refinance that debt until after 2018.
Do you want to talk about, a little bit about that debt fund that we talked about the other day where it's a little bit, where it's over, got too much money in it and we need to do something with that money?
Yes, sir. What we'll do is, in the budget hearing on Friday, I'll have quite a bit to say about that. But when we talk about the effective rate and the rollback rate, we're still waiting to hear from Greg Stewart on those calculations. Collections of sales taxes, it looks like they're going to have an impact on the property tax rate of just about 8.5 cents. That is, sales tax collections in the county hold down the property tax by about 8.5 cents. How do I put this? In Hood County, we have a lot of us who are older. There are a lot of us who are nearing or at retirement age, and that weighted average tends to put more tax revenues into the debt service fund because there are a lot of exemptions that get applied. And the way the software works on tax calculations, calculations are made in such a way that we would plan for money to come to the general fund when in fact, when they're actually collected, they get diverted more and more to the debt service fund. And the reason for that is our average age of taxpayer in Hood County is older. So we end up with more money in the debt service fund than we're, than we should properly have. So as a result, even though we need about $3 million a year in the debt service fund of tax revenue to pay for the debt service of interest and principal, we're planning to spend about $500,000 of accumulated fund balance in the debt service fund to hold down the debt service tax rate to about 5.5 cents. Is that what you had in mind?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of explain to the court.
That's the plan right now. We still don't know exactly what the effective tax rate will be. We don't know what the rollback rate will be. The comptroller still hasn't published the final worksheets for calculating those.
I thought they were supposed to have that done by the 25th.
Well, that's when the certified appraised roll had to be given to us. I believe we have until August 8th to actually publish the effective rate and the rollback rate.
That'll be in the paper then.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, it's the reason we're doing it on Friday, what, is that the 31st?
That's correct. Yes, sir. But we would ask the court's permission to pay these bills as listed.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to ratify paying the bills for July 7th to July 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton, do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stan. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judge to sign permits for upcoming events. And let's take the, if you all don't have a problem with this, it's the Brazos River Corvette Club charity and then the Biker Bash for September the 14th. Does anybody have any questions about either one of these?
I have both packets in front of me, Judge. Both of these individual events that contacted my office, the Biker Bash is September 5th through the 7th, and I do have all the paperwork from the city as well showing their liability insurance. The forms came through your office. And then the Corvette Club's the same way. We have all the forms. The liability's been presented to the city, so basically they're just asking to use the courthouse, but all forms are in place and liability insurance is in place, City of Granbury's permits in place with both these applications.
Okay, does anybody, is anybody here representing either one of them that'd like to, would you like to address the court? I mean, okay, I think it's going to be a slide through, so.
Would you like to address the court?
That's fine.
All right, well.
Just for the court's benefit, the times are on your applications of when they're wanting to use the square, so if it's posted and they ask people not to park there, it will be posted by the individual event coordinators, so we need to be cognizant of that, okay?
Okay.
But then I'll make a motion, we approve.
I got it. All right. I need to address something. Last year, we had the square and the park down the street. Okay, this year, we're not doing the park. We're just doing the square. And we've heard two or three different things. I mean, what is the ordinance on what time we have to be done on the square at night?
When the county doesn't have ordinances, we have resolutions. So all we're approving is the use of the square.
Okay.
So the city who give you the permit will have to answer that question on the ordinances.
Okay.
Because on the permit, I just flipped to yours, your Biker Bash, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Friday, it's 5:00 PM, and by midnight, it must be end time on midnight, is what it says.
Okay.
Now, that's what it says on your application.
Okay.
And, but we're only allowing you to use the square and set up, and that's what we're approving here this morning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that midnight, okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll be done by 11:00. We just had some different things. People, some of the vendors thought that they had to be shut down at 6:00. And that's why everybody moved out there to the park. Well, this year, we're going to let them stay open till 10:00, you know, which is the one.
If you'll call in, I do believe the ordinance, and I don't want to get in the city's business, I believe it is 11:00, okay, for surrounding residents, but they'll answer that question. But on your application, you have midnight on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, you have 11:00 PM, and that you'll have, you'll be off the square for county business by, you put 6:00 PM on Sunday, but I think we've always allowed, you know, to clean up till, as long as it's open by 6:00 AM the next morning, okay?
On Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday, you're correct, yeah. Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
My mistake.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion on miscellaneous C, item one, A and B, if we take them together to approve those requests.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding renewal of the lease for the county property located at 1322 Peluxi Road. We had, they, they had a appraisal done, and it said that it was like 13 something to 1550, and I recommend the, that we renew the lease at 1550 a square foot, 7,700 square feet.
That's on the indigent clinic, is that correct?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve the rate of 1550 for the county property located at 1322 Peluxi Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion?
That was in our package for hospital board on Friday. Derek was handing that out, so I guess the motion would be for you to sign the lease, is that the question?
Right.
As well?
Right.
So accept 1550, and you sign the lease with the hospital district or?
The hospital.
Yes.
Yeah.
CHS.
Right.
Okay.
And that's a five-year lease, correct? Or is that three?
I thought it was a three-year.
Three, maybe three.
But I don't have it in front of me.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action on OTS Homeowners Association disposal of tires for their annual cleanup day. Commissioner four and one.
James, you want to take this? You want me to?
It don't matter. It's, Association has approximately 300 tires that want to be picked up, and they're willing to bring the tires to us, stack them at their expense, and it's one of their cleanup days they're doing, and we want the county to allow them to bring. They're going to try to do it in three states, am I correct, Steve?
Yeah, the letter states that they have their HOA cleanup day, and they collected 300 tires, and our rules at the CCS are we allow four tires unless it's an HOA. They're willing to bring 100 tires in the first load and will notify us in advance when they bring the other loads of 100, unless environmental health and James McCoslin can work out a semi or truck, and then they're willing to bring all 300 and load them and supply the labor.
Is there any salvage value on those tires?
There used to be. Depending on who the contract was, we had a contract that was a sweet deal at one time with a company that brought a semi down, and we set the semi out there. Once the semi was loaded, then the company took them and they shredded the tires and put it back in road base, I believe, right, Don? So in the past, but that, they got more tires than they needed. So now we're having to, and I don't see James McCoslin in the audience, but if, it's hard to get rid of them, but we do have a contract. He mainly gets his contracts on tires through COG, okay? The Council of Governments.
Thank you.
And they, they agreed to stack the tires in the trailer, so be no expectation.
If we have a trailer on site, okay? But Terry McDonald came to see both James and I since Oakshores Falls in Precinct One and Four, and they're just needing to get rid of them. Right now, they're sitting at the old swimming pool park, and he'd like to start moving those tires, but they need a voucher from the Commissioners' Court so that the CCS allows them to bring more than the normal rate of tires, is what this request is for.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Now, item number five is to convene into executive session per government code.
You skipped four.
Did I skip four? Okay, consider and take appropriate action regarding the 2015-16 employee benefit package.
Judge and Commissioners, it gives me great pleasure to recommend a 2015-16 employee benefits package. When I interviewed you, we gentlemen, back in February, you told me the elephant in the room was the health insurance package. So we worked very hard in my department, all three of us are brand new, at work with employees and with the Texas Association of Counties and the current vendors to put together a package that will, I think, be well received by the employees. County will continue, we can pay for the entire health insurance package for employees, so employees pay zero, and all employees that have dependent coverage will have a slight reduction. So across the board, we have 2% reduction in the health insurance package for Hood County. I've been doing health insurance benefits for 30 years, and this is unheard of in today's market, so it's with great pleasure that I present the 2% reduction in health insurance, plus no increase on the dental and vision, and no increase on the life insurance. So I think the employees will, will really appreciate what the county has done for them.
I'd like to give Richard a congratulations and attaboy on doing all of his hard work, plus his staff put a lot of hours into this and really got out there and saved the county some money.
Thank you.
I would say the same thing, James, and I think the thing is that he's already put Texas Association of Counties on notice that when the federal excise tax, which is the Cadillac tax goes into effect, that in 2018, the county will not be, he's trying to get us in a position where we won't have to be in that position. So, I mean, as he said, the elephant in the room when he was hired was the insurance, and he's done a great job with three new staff members in that office. Thank you, Richard.
More questions?
No, thank you very much.
I think we have to sign that and send it back, so with that, I make a motion that we allow the county judge and our HR, Richard Gary, to sign that renewal and send back to Texas Association of Counties.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Berry to allow the county judge to sign the employee benefit package with Texas Association of Counties for 2015-2016. Do I have a second?[1781.51]
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we're going to convene into executive session per Texas Government Code 551071, consultation with attorneys and outside attorney to discuss and consider matters concerning pending litigation. Is there, so we're going to go back here. Thank you. Okay, it is 10:14, and we're back into open session. Is, we, the closed session, executive session, was to get updates from our attorney, and we have done that, and there's really no action that we discussed, so basically, we're adjourned at 10:15.